Hello?
Hello, Commissioner Owens, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you as well.
Yes, my computer decided to do an upgrade, so it's just spinning for the moment.
Yeah, that's perfect timing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So hopefully it'll upload and I'll join you that way, but for the time being, I'm on this cell phone.
Okay, well, look, we'll keep an eye out for your name if you join by your computer.
Thank you.
Hello, Miguel, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, thank you, sir.
We got Bob for rooming in.
Hello, Bob, can you hear us?
This is Mike with Giant RV, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, Mike?
Hi.
Are you calling in with Bob?
Yes, Bob's sitting right here next to me.
Hey, you're very muffled.
Is this better?
It's still muffled.
See if I can improve it. Make this be good. Now, the mic.
How about now?
You just need to shut the door.
Yeah.
And talk with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's like the system. It's like a job. I think, yes. Uh, what do you know? That's me.
Ready to go? Is there anybody there? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I'm here.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the June 16th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Please note that the meeting is being-
Recording in progress.
Please note that the meeting is being attended by the Planning Commission and applicants via teleconference. We thank you for your patience as we navigate city business through the modified meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, all voting will be by roll call. I will now call the meeting to order. Planning Secretary Camel, can I have a roll call, please?
Hello, Commissioner Duarte. Mary said we're not ready to start yet.
Oh, we're not? Okay.
Thank you, Chair, we can begin.
Okay, so now, good evening again. Welcome to the June 16th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Please note that the meeting is being attended by the Planning Commission and applicants via teleconference. We thank you for their patience as we navigate city business through the modified meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, all voting will be by roll call. I will now call the meeting to order. Planning Secretary Camel, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ortiz.
Present.
Commissioner Montoya.
Present.
Vice Chair Owens.
Present.
And Chair Duarte.
Present. Okay, going on to the Planning Commission, this is now the time for Planning Commission announcements, requests for future agenda items and conference meeting reports. Vice Chair Owens, do you have anything to report?
No, Mr. Chair, nothing to report, thank you.
Commissioner Montoya?
Nothing to report, thank you.
And Commissioner Ortiz?
I don't think to report, thank you, Chair.
Okay, I have nothing either. Going on to presentations, Community Development Director Schindler, are there any presentations for tonight?
No presentation tonight, Chair Duarte.
Thank you. Committee Development Director Schindler, are there any city council actions to report on?
Yes, the City Council approved a contract as recommended by staff to start a study on an inclusionary housing ordinance. And an inclusionary housing ordinance is an ordinance that cities put into place to promote and mandate the inclusion of affordable units in future housing developments or present housing developments if they have that ordinance in place. There's also options for developers that don't want to build affordable housing on their sites to pay waivers or go through other concessions as well. This is part of the City Council's Affordable Housing Subcommittee's vision to create more opportunities for affordable housing in the city of Downey. And so staff is going to begin work, or excuse me, staff has begun work with a subject matter expert to do an analysis to see how that would be laid out in our community. And so we foresee a community meeting with residents, another community meeting with housing builders that produce housing in our city, a study session with the Planning Commission, and then ultimately a recommendation of the Planning Commission to institute an inclusionary housing ordinance to allow for a more balanced approach to include affordable housing in future housing developments. It's a tool that's used by a lot of surrounding cities. I think there's up to 170 cities statewide that have inclusionary housing ordinances. Surrounding cities such as Long Beach and Pasadena have them as well. So it's nothing really out of the ordinary that's done. It's a good tool to get more affordable housing in your community. So once again, something that you folks will see and hear about in the near future that staff's going to begin work on, and that concludes my update.
Thank you very much. Now moving on to public hearings, we have public hearings.
Mr. Chair, I have one question of Mr. Schindler, if I could.
Nice.
So although if you know, relative to our situation, you know, being a city of 115,000, more or less, not Pasadena, not Long Beach, do you have an example of a city of our size that has this in place?
Oh, yeah, most definitely, the city of Whittier.
Okay, all right. I just needed something. Yeah, thank you.
Sure, and you know, that's a great question, Commissioner Owens. When we survey cities, we survey cities that are very close in terms of demographic makeup of the city of Downey. So I mentioned the two cities of Long Beach and Pasadena just because they came to mind, but when we dive into a scientific survey, we try our best to look at apples to apples because we understand we're not Long Beach, we're not San Jose, we're not Pasadena. So it's, and that's in every aspect of what we do. So when people talk about our downtown in terms of what's happening there, we don't look at LA, you know, or the Gaslamp District. No, we look at Monrovia, Claremont, Fullerton, and so forth. Always try to keep it apples to apples. Thanks, Commissioner Owens.
Thank you, Alden.
Yes, thanks, Vice Chair. Now going on to the public hearings for P L N dash 21 dash 00032. Does the Secretary have proof of publication?
Yes, we do.
Director Schindler, can you introduce the staff person presenting this item?
Thank you, Chair Duarte. Tonight we have our Associate Planner Irving Anaya to provide the presentation.
Can everybody see my screen right now? Oh, okay. So Irving's freaking out a little bit, but this is going to end up going on to City Council, so I'll be going ahead and giving your presentation tonight. Let's get started. So before you tonight is a request for a specific plan amendment to allow an update to the specific plan sign standards. The Florence Avenue I-5 specific plan is located at the Studebaker Road and Florence Avenue intersection. It encompasses the Giant RV site Honda World and the former Cadillac dealership. The specific plan for this area was adopted in 1991 with the intent of encouraging high intensity commercial uses in the area. As noted earlier, the request before you is to amend Section 3 A G of the existing specific plan to allow for updates to the sign standards. One of these updates and changes is to increase the number of freeway oriented signs from one sign to two signs in order to take advantage of both freeways that border the specific plan area. The updates will also update the standards to include new technology that wasn't around in 1991 when the specific plan was adopted. So a new section will be added, Section 9, to identify different standards, design standards, operational standards, height standards for the new signs that are going to be located. We've also updated the specific plan. It previously only allowed for a sign on Site 12. We're now allowing it on both Site 1 and Site 12, one sign on each location. So again, here is an overview for you. You did receive as an attachment to your staff report the new language that is being introduced into the specific plan. We have just a general summary for you here. Again, design standards were put in place to make sure that the sign would be consistent with the surrounding buildings in the area that they're located. We do have conditions and standards in there to ensure that the new sign, as it operates, won't interfere with any vehicles, that it won't be an objectional light source as required by Caltrans, and again, just making sure that it is a safe and it is a sign that is to standard. Let's take a look here. So if the specific plan is approved tonight, the specific plan amendment is approved tonight, then this sign will be submitted by Giant RV to the Building Division for a plan check review. The sign that is being proposed will be located on the northeast area of the property. It will be oriented toward the I-5 freeway. The proposed sign again is going to be an administrative review. And here you have a view from Florence Avenue. The proposed sign again is going to be toward the northeast area of the property. If you can see, the proposed sign design is at an angle so that it takes, it takes advantage of visibility from the I-5 freeway, and it does not have any orientation toward being visible on Florence Avenue. For this reason, staff doesn't have any, any cause for concern that traffic will be generated in the overall specific plan area. Again, all of the conditions that were placed in there, all of the new standards are requiring that it be compliant and that any new sign obtain a permit from Caltrans as is required, as well as any permits from the city of Downey. And this concludes staff's report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Crystal. Commissioner Ortiz, do you have any questions?
Is the sign going to take down, the current sign that's up right now?
No, the current sign is considered a non-conforming sign, so as long as it remains and it's maintained, then it can stay there. If for any reason they're redeveloping the site and it is removed, then it can no longer be replaced.
Okay. No questions.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yeah, just one question. The sign, will it be dual sided? Okay, it will be. Okay, then that concludes the rest of my questions. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Owens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Crystal, for a very nice presentation. My question would be, and it's on the drawing, but this is a super graphic type sign, you know, multiple thousands of LEDs, and it's programmable and changeable, so the messaging could be upgraded, graphics could be different colors, you know, at any particular time via the control of, you know, of that sign?
Yes, it's electronic, so they will be able to make modifications to it. What was of greatest concern to staff and in looking at the Caltrans requirements, obviously obscenities are not allowed and that has to be monitored as well as the brightness and how often the sign copy is changed, at what speed it's done, and those types of items are what are binding.
Okay, that's kind of my question. Yeah, I wanted to understand, you know, if we were certainly investigating, if that's the right word, every aspect of public annoyance, you know, if there is going to be something like that, and certainly there is occasion for that to happen. And the annoyance would be, of course, you know, if it was a rapidly flashing or other type of, of visual noise, if you will, you know, and it sounds like staff is working with the applicant to keep that within limits. And along with that, do we have limits in our current sign policies or are we now, you know, with the advent of boards like this, you know, looking to get some, some things set, you know, for future applicants?
So that is actually a really good question. We don't have those standards as part of our municipal code that applies to the entire city. This is brand new and this would be the first area of the city where we would be applying these into the specific plan area because of its unique geographic location and that it is bordered directly by, by two freeways and it's not immediately adjacent to many residential uses. So this is a very unique area of the city where this does make sense to introduce these types of signs. But we did, again, want to be cautious of everything that you just mentioned. So there is an eight second delay between, you know, changeable copy and those types of items. Also, after dusk, there's illumination changes that have to be done, so it can't be as bright as it would be during the day because the overall, the technology of it, but there's obviously the light gets dimmer all around, so we need to make sure they're accommodating for that and there's a timer on the sign itself to automatically do that.
Okay, great, great. Sounds like you've got it all considered and certainly moving towards, you know, a positive outcome. Thank you very much.
And then, Crystal, I just wanted to ask in terms of, yeah, I, I believe, wasn't this advocate here before us maybe about three years ago? And we granted, I don't know if variance is the right word, in terms of a height for the sign?
I believe that was in relation to a fence, the-
It was the fence, yeah.
Yeah.
We moved the fence, moved the fence out.
Yes, I don't think Crystal was with us at the time. Commissioner Owens is correct. It was a variance for the fence height. You know, they've got a unique sales component in terms of their dealership as opposed to the typical auto dealer. And they've got many houses that are being sold out there and a lot of their amenities were being damaged. And so we wanted to make sure that their product, their investment was going to remain stable, and so hence we supported the increase in height for that wrought iron fence out there, and it's worked well for them. I think they've done a bang up job out there.
Steel trap my mind over there, Vice Chair Owens.
I'm sorry.
I said you have a great memory of this, Vice Chair. I didn't know if that's the sign. And then I just, I guess, last, this last question in terms of, Mr. Owens talked about the illumination, things of that nature. Just one question too, is in terms of this sign only will allow advertising for this actual company, correct? They can't sublet it, you know, for other, other companies messaging, is that correct?
The specific plan language is that they can advertise for the, the general area, so the specific plan area, they can advertise for the other businesses within that area and within the city of Downey.
And Commissioner Duarte? That's driven by Caltrans standards, and so Caltrans does not allow for what's called off premise advertising. And so that on premise advertising is Giant RV, and then we've got a application in for a new Honda dealership. Okay, great, just heard some feedback. Yeah, just, we've got an application in for a new Honda dealership across the street, and so that on premise is going to include them as well. And so we want to be able to market that dealership off of that sign. So that's going to be based on a partnership that Giant RV and Honda get into. That's not so much something that we're privy to. Caltrans dictates, you know, that on premise restriction, and so it's not going to be like a typical sign that you see off the freeway that's advertising everything in addition to Giant RV.
Oh, okay, great. Well, that's all my questions. Thank you very much, Crystal. Okay, so before we begin the public comments, one moment. I'd like now to invite the applicants to actually discuss their application.
Hi, I'm Mike Murphy with Giant RV. First off, I want to thank you for the opportunity and for you guys taking the time to review the plans for the signage. I'm sure you're aware that, you know, we've had some struggles there the first three years based on some of the construction and difficulty getting to the property. This sign is very important to us to enhance that facility, you know. This, last year, we were able to move away from our lease on the property and acquire the property. So it allowed me to invest heavily in the property with new asphalt and many things. So we've improved the overall property. But one of the keystone things for us was to have a display sign like we have at our other locations. The sign is the same type of sign we have at the other locations. I can tell you, in having that sign, not only does it help with the sales aspect, when I have a sign like this, I can actually attract about a 20% increase in the amount of traffic I get to the store that was related to the sign. So it's very substantial. If I'm looking at, you know, five million in sale, I believe I increased 20% and add another million to my sales numbers. So that's very substantial, but to me, it goes beyond that. We do some things, employment applications. We've struggled in the Downey market with applicants. I know when I advertise for applicants at our other locations on our sign, I get a lot of applicants. So that's another use for that sign for me. And then beyond that, at my other locations, we partner with the cities. Not only with the cities, but, well, for example, March Air Force Base. They asked to use our sign for some special events. The city, Marietta's approached us about their balloon fest and using the sign. Highway Patrol's approached us about drunk driving messages. We're very accommodating with those type of things and partnering with the cities for the use of the sign. I think it's important to have that relationship. The, I think, what else? Really, that's about it. Those are the things we use the sign for, and it'll definitely enhance our business. Are there any other questions I can answer for you?
Yes, let me, I'll take turns here asking some of the commissioners their questions. Vice Chair Owens, do you have any questions?
Just a comment. Hi, Bob.
Hi.
So I'll tell you upfront, I'm a big fan. I was a Bob Spring employee many, many years ago, and so what's near and dear to my heart is that fountain, which is no longer there, but actually the iconic, you know, signage that that fountain offered, if you will, you know, it was where the freeways met in Downey. That was the phraseology, right? So on the offer to the city, I know that they'll work it out, but I'm a big fan of the public service messages, you know, as the other agencies have approached you about, you know, and using the sign or community events or, you know, the emergency warnings, any of that stuff. So I just wanted to make a comment on that, but we'll get to our discussion as commissioners, but I'm already a yes vote. But nonetheless, I just, yeah, I would encourage you, anything that we can get, you know, in this part- uh, yeah, I would encourage you, anything that we can get, you know, uh, in this partnership, absolutely, absolutely. We'll do business together. It'll be a, uh, you know, a great way to go. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for consider, considering that.
For Bob and Mike, I'm sorry. Bob, Bob, your, your name pops up in, in Mike's, uh, picture. So, so, all right, great, thank you.
We love to be in the city of Downey. We are a very, very happy being in Downey. And we, even though we have done everything.
Okay, great. Uh, Commissioner Montoya, do you have any questions to the advocate?
No questions, but a comment. Um, I understand how important marketing is, especially now coming out of the pandemic and hopefully, uh, people having more disposable incomes. So, um, you know, I, I totally get, and uh, that's nice for you to kind of give us, uh, a number, uh, percentage that you can put to increase of sales due to the marketing of the signs. So, um, you know, I just, just wanted to make that comment and, uh, thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
And I, I have no, uh, no questions. So, thank you very much. Um, so before we begin the public comments, I'd like to remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey municipal code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meetings, even if you're participating telephonically. Each speaker have three minutes to address the commission. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission regarding the public hearing for item PLN dash two, one, dash, three, three, uh, dash zero, zero, three, two, sorry, only may now call our teleconference line at five, six, two, two, nine, nine, six, six, two, two. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. I will now open the public comments. Secretary Kavanaugh, may I have the first speaker on the phone?
Chair Duarte, there are no calls for public comment.
Secretary Kavanaugh, do we have any written public comments on the item?
Yes, we do have one email for, uh, public comments on this item. Uh, with me one moment. Okay, the email is from Tanya Moreno, received Monday, June fourteenth to Irving Anaya and public comments. Good evening, planning commission members. I am writing in opposition to the proposed specific plan amendment, PLN twenty-one, zero, 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 three, two, that will allow two freeways freestanding signs. Please understand that I am by no means opposed to seeing Giant RV improve their current sign. I would like to see Giant RV continue to thrive and contribute to the economy of our city. However, the proposed electronic message sign is unnecessary and oversized for our city. Residents in the city of Downey, Interstate six oh five, Interstate five freeway, and city of Santa Fe Springs area have seen improvements such as Giant RV and the freeway off-ramp on Florence, Florence Avenue. Although we are appreciative of improvements, we also have seen a significant increase in traffic along Florence Avenue and Studebaker Road and the I five freeway. While there may be a need to upgrade the sign, the proposed electronic sign will only add traffic to this area. Drivers tend to slow down to look and read the electronic messages, message signs causing congestion. The electronic message sign, if approved, would bring additional vehicle traffic to this area and car accidents. Overall, the electronic message sign is not in keeping with the surroundings in that it is intrusive and it is not consistent with the character of our city and adjoining residential neighborhoods. The aesthetic value of the city is one of the most important elements of our identity and the safety of our drivers should be our top priority. I urge the planning commission to work with Giant RV to consider a traditional sign. Please do not adopt the proposed resolution approving this specific plan amendment, PLN twenty-one, zero, 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 three, two. Thank you for your time, Tanya Moreno. And that's the last item.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now close the public comments. So, you know, begin deliberation. I'll take turns asking commissioner, the commissioners if they have any comments. I will start with you, Vice Chair Owens.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, I piped in a couple of minutes ago, but it's simply the same, um. Staff reported that of any place in the city where this is most appropriate is this location. So I, uh, took into consideration the comment, the email that was just read. You know, trying to understand, uh, that person's perspective. I do understand, you know, uh, they see that area as, you know, something different than I particularly see it. Um, like I had mentioned before, Florence and Studebaker has always been iconic, uh, to this city in my eyes, um, because of what had been there and what now exists. Um, back when Giant RV approached us, you know, for the use of that property, um, I was a yes vote then too, because understanding the type of, um, tax revenues based on sales, you know, the city could benefit from and a good use of space, just an excellent place, you know, um, to put, uh, this dealership, um, instead of what had been there and what may have never, you know, been put there unless they, uh, came to town. So to help their business, o- obviously, which helps our city, um, the improvement, um, to me is, uh, not invasive. You know, we, uh, spoke a little bit about the super graphic nature of the board and what LEDs can do and, uh, based on programming and in the control of the message maker. Um, seems like all that is in dispassion to, you know, uh, work for our city. So, uh, with all that said, um, I'm a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, Vice Chair Montoya?
I think Commissioner Owens hit all the, hit all the points of discussion. Uh, no further, no further questions or, or comments to add. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Ortiz?
I think we all share the same, uh, thoughts. Uh, as someone who owns a business, I understand, uh, the importance of advertisement. And I'm sure this is going to help them out. Uh, and I like the idea of using a sign to advertise some things for our city. And I like that they, uh, said they'll help us out as well. So I'm a yes vote too.
Yes, and, yeah, I guess, you know, I guess Vice Chair Owens, I think, pretty much, uh, stated what we were all feeling. I, I'd just like to add, I think that this is a little more modern sign too. I think makes it a little more appealing, um, and a little more attractive for the area. Um, I do appreciate the comments from, uh, Ms., uh, Moreno. I think that actually, you know, was very well stated. Um, and I, you know, I'd like to see that, uh, in terms of, uh, engagement from the community. Um, you know, however, I just by weighing, you know, both sides, uh, you know, I, I definitely am also in favor of the sign. Uh, so, you know, with that, if anybody has a motion in a second.
Do I have, I have one question if I may for clarification?
Yes.
If I wasn't mistaken, on the first slide, I saw two stars, um, is, and then I know that we're approving for, uh, for two signs. Is it for the current sign and then the current that they have right now, an additional sign for that? Is there going to build another, uh, sign on the, uh, the first slide that we saw when they were presenting?
Sure. So I can specify, there is one existing freestanding sign on the Honda world adjacent to the six oh five freeway. That was one of the stars that you saw.
Okay.
Um, the other star you saw was the non-conforming Giant RV sign that's there right now.
Okay.
But that one's non-conforming, that doesn't count as one of the two.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve, uh, PM, uh, PLN dash two, one, zero, 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 uh, thirty-two?
Second?
Do we have a motion and a second? Secretary Kavanaugh, may we please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Ortiz?
Aye.
Commissioner Montoya?
Aye.
Vice Chair Owens?
Aye.
And Chair Duarte?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously with all four in favor.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes. Okay, now moving on. Non-agenda public comments. This portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission and items within the jurisdiction of the planning commission and not listed on the agenda. It is requested but not required that you state your name, address, and subject matter upon which you wish to speak. Please remember your comments to no more than three minutes pursuant to the Brown Act. No discussion or action other than a brief response, referral to the city planning staff, or schedule for a subsequent agenda shall be taken by the planning commission on any issue brought forth upon this section. Before we begin the non-agenda public comment period, I'd like to remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey municipal code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, even if you're participating telephonically. Each speaker shall have three minutes to address the commission on issues that are within the commi- the commission's jurisdiction. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission regarding non-agenda public comments only may now call our teleconference line at five, six, two, two, nine, nine, six, six, two, two. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. Secretary Kavanaugh, may I have the first speaker on the phone?
Chair Duarte, there are no calls for public comment.
Secretary Kavanaugh, do we have any written public comments on the non-agenda items to be read into the record?
There are no written public comments.
Okay, we will now close the non-agenda public comment section. Going on to the consent calendar. And prior, you know, just prior to, uh, we have the consent calendar, I will note that item number three, the August fifth, uh, minutes, we don't have form for that. Um, so we will need, uh, I think, Commissioner Montoya, if you can, uh, look at those minutes, the video sometime and, you know, maybe in the future we can vote on it.
Is that something, um, I could pull up on, on YouTube or is there a link, uh, I need to check out specifically?
Yeah.
We, we can, we can send you the link and, uh, you can just click on that and, and check it out.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All right, so items in the section will be voted on in one motion unless the commissioner requests separate actions. Anyone wishing to comment on the consent counter item should be recognized by the chair, state name, address, and agenda item number. Further, any consent counter items removed from the agenda will be considered by the commission following the public hearing items. Uh, before we begin the consent calendar period, I'd like to again remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city meeting rules contained in the Downey municipal code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, even if you're participating telephonically. Each speaker shall have three minutes to address the commission on consent counter items. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission regarding consent counter items only may now call our teleconference line at five, six, two, two, nine, nine, six, six, two, two. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. Secretary Kavanaugh, may I have the first speaker on the phone?
There are no calls for public comment.
Secretary Kavanaugh, do we have a written public comment on the consent counter items to be read into the record?
No written public comments for the consent calendar chair.
Moving along, we'll now close the consent calendar public comments. Uh, does any commissioner have any question on the items? Vice Chair Owens?
None, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Montoya?
No questions.
And Commissioner Ortiz?
No questions, Steve.
Okay, then, so other than, uh, moving, uh, item three, the August fifth minutes, uh, for a future meeting, uh, is there a motion on the consent counter items?
I motion to approve, accept items two and four of the consent calendar and hold over item three until we have a quorum on that item.
Okay, do we have a second?
That care?
I'm sorry, who's the second? Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Kavanaugh, may you please take a roll call vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz?
Aye.
Commissioner Montoya?
Aye.
Vice Chair Owens?
Aye.
And Chair Duarte?
Aye.
And the motion passes to approve the items of the consent calendar with unanimously with all four in favor to approve items number two and four and continue item number three to a date uncertain.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, uh, moving along to other business, does any commissioner have, uh, anything they'd like to discuss? Uh, Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Montoya?
I've got nothing. Thank you.
And Vice Chair Owens?
Um, just a question of staff, although, um, with the sidewalk dining still occurring on Downing Avenue, long range, if you've got an answer, you know, of course, ballpark, uh, does that remain in place? Are we going to continue that style? I'm a fan of that, but that's my question. Are we going to continue that or does it go away at some point?
Sure, it's not going to go away anytime soon. Um, and formerly in-house, we had thought that we'd phase it out, uh, with daylight savings. So as the weather cooled, you know, we'd phase it out, allow the restaurants to take advantage of the warmer weather over the summer and the early fall. But also in, in the last couple of weeks, uh, the governor, um, rescinded, or not rescinded, he extended his emergency order to allow restaurant dining to, to go into the future. And, and so he kind of took the lead on that. Um, Councilmember Ashton has also asked us to look at it. And so w- we've also spoken to, uh, a lot of the different larger, uh, private property owners, specifically the shopping centers. Uh, so Stonewood, for example, isn't all that excited about BJ's taking up that, that, uh, driveline? And so, you know, they're probably going to pull that back as soon as BJ starts to hit their occupancies of close to a hundred percent. Uh, Promenade's kind of on the fence, you know, they kind of see what's happening out there and they, they like the traffic flows. Uh, Stonewood, you know, also, you know, kind of assessing it day to day, you know, for them also is, you know, uh, the business owners on our commission, no, it, it turns into a lease arrangement. You know, you, you're, you're now, during the pandemic, they did what they can to support businesses, but post-pandemic, when people start hitting a hundred percent capacity, it turns into, you know, wow, what does my existing lease say? My existing lease is based off X amount of square feet and you now, you know, exceed that. So do we need to talk? From the city's perspective, uh, we're here to support, uh, our local businesses. So, um, uh, where it's, it's, uh, it's an area that it's going to work, uh, we're here for them. In the downtown specifically, uh, we have a, uh, a downtown property owners association called the district, and we're looking for them for guidance as well as we have K rails up and the K rails, uh, have been working. We, we haven't had any complaints in terms of uh, any traffic obstructions or congestions or, or anything of that nature. Uh, and, uh, some of the property owners there like it. And, and so, uh, we're going to see what we can do to support our businesses because alfresco, you know, has been something that's caught on, not only in Downey, but, you know, across the region.
And to that, so as, um, base, if you will, in Downey, you know, unoccupied, uh, space, it's, uh, you know, up for lease in different corridors. Would that be something the city might talk to, uh, you know, a, a, a prospective, uh, Lisi about that, hey, you could also come out onto the sidewalk, you know, with your food service?
Yeah, most definitely. Most of them can now. Uh, they require an encroachment permit from, uh, the public works department. It all comes down to ADA, you know, if you've got that forty-eight inches clear, you know, uh, you most likely can come out into the sidewalk.
All right, because I was specifically speaking about this District Two, which I represent. Lot of space, you know, still in South Downey, in that area, Southwest Downey, that's not fully occupied and dormant, vacant. And so maybe in, you know, we don't need a restaurant every other suite, but you know, a- adding a few, to me, it doesn't hurt. And especially if that's an option to, you know, um, again, with the ADA being considered, uh, kind of, uh, you know, build, build it out on the sidewalk as well.
Totally agree. We, we see a, a lot of the, um, the, the pandemic, uh, business operations, uh, bleeding over to a post-pandemic world, uh, you know, no different than, you know, people working from home and the percentages of that are not decreasing as much as people thought. So, uh, in terms of our business operations, uh, we're going to try to remain as flexible as possible to, to help our businesses, uh, strive.
Thank you very much.
But, you know, just following up on, on that question from, uh, Commissioner Owens, uh, just sort of a little clarity. So is that a, a state mandate in terms of the, the outside eating or does each individual city have their own say?
You know what? It was local. And I think the state, what the state did is they tried to support local businesses and put that out. You know what? It was local. And I think the state, what the state did is they tried to support local businesses and put that out. Um, we had ours, um, and, and, you know, independent, you know, what the state was doing. Uh, but you know, the state also was working in parallel uh, with those activities as well. Um, even absent what the state was going to do, let's just say the state took no action, you know, a couple of weeks ago. We were still of the mindset that we were gonna let this roll out, you know, until the daylight savings kicked in. And then what we were gonna do, you know, is, is have a, a, a slow thoughtful conversation with our businesses. And lo and behold, if, you know, there was a, a, a large wave of, of businesses and, and property owner support of continuing outdoor dining, then that's probably a direction that we were gonna go in, you know, independent of the state. Uh, where our challenges and how we work with the planning commission is, we'd like them to look as pretty as possible. You know, uh, we did allow a lot of leniency in, in terms of that outdoor dining. Uh, you know, Lazy Dog uh, is a great restaurant, great product. Um, you know, a, a national tenant, uh, they've got kind of a makeshift, you know, outdoor dining area. And, and so once again, everybody looked the other way to support them through COVID. But, you know, there's an example, if they came back and said, hey, we'd like to do this permanently, we'd go to them and say, well, we want it to look as nice as your building. Uh, if you've been inside a Lazy Dog, you know, they got a, a pretty cool looking restaurant inside and they also have a great looking exterior facade. So, once again, if they said back, came back and said, we wanna expand our patio, we'd say, we'd like it to look as nice as your existing patio that have, that you have out there. So, that, that's where we would start to look and say, if it's going to be permanent, we'd like it to be more than an easy up.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll already put everything inside at Lazy Dog.
Okay, uh, now going on to staff member comments, Director Schindler, do you have any comment, any staff comments?
Yes, thanks, uh, Chair Duarte. So, uh, we've given a couple uh, verbal updates on the uh, new light rail station that, that's coming to town, uh, specifically in the Rancho South Campus, off of Gardendale, uh, near that railroad crossing. And, and so, uh, we've been working on that specific land, sp- excuse me, specific plan through a grant that we got through Metro. And that is to build a zoned, eh, eh, not build, to allow for a zoned area around that transit stop for transit oriented development. So, i- as you've looked at, as how Metro has expanded their, their lines, uh, what cities do is, is they work to zone that area so that people could live right next to, to mass transit and businesses could open next to mass transit. You could have open space next to mass trans- transit. Hence, you've got a transit oriented village that is built out from there. And so, that uh, light rail station is going on county land. And, and so we're working with the county and Metro um, and the gateway cities of, of governments and, and Echo Rapid and, you know, all the other regional planning groups uh, to lay out the zoning for that area to allow for those uses that I mentioned. So, the environmental impact report uh, was made public, uh, I believe last Thursday or Friday. And, and so, uh, we're soliciting public comment on that. Uh, it's gonna allow, you know, for a good amount of units. Uh, right now, we're setting upwards of seven hundred units uh, to be allowed on that site. Um, the, the buildable area of that Rancho South Campus is, you know, approximately thirty-five percent of the, you know, a hundred and seventy acres that are over there. So, i- it's, it's not gonna be an immediate transformation of that area. And quite frankly, it'll probably move at a slower pace, uh, because it's owned by the county. And the county's got some existing leases out there and the county manages the land, so they're kind of gonna manage, you know, how the development happens out there. Um, our intent, once again, is to take advantage of that new light rail station that's coming. And that light rail station, the West Santa Ana Branch, is going to go from the city of Artesia into uh, Union Station as, as the ultimate stop. And, and so it's gonna, you know, create a lot of convenience to get to a Dodger game or, you know, Alveros, Alera Street, or Phillips, uh, for that matter. Uh, so once again, uh, we know that the inclusion of uh, new developments, you know, anywhere, you know, raises eyebrows. Uh, so we're probably gonna get a decent amount of comment on that. Um, we are going to schedule a study session at our next planning commission meeting for the commissioners uh, so that you could see the uh, specific plan, um, and what its intentions are. Um, and, you know, kind of where it lays it out. Uh, and then, most likely, at the following meeting, your second meeting in July, we're gonna ask for your recommendation to the council uh, to uh, uh, support uh, that specific plan. And so once again, a huge endeavor that we've been working on, you know, over the last few years, and also excited about a new light rail line that's, that's coming to Downey. Uh, the second item is our housing element, and we've made mention of this as well. Um, the housing element update, um, is an eight-year plan that all cities do in the state of California. We're, we're in our current housing element, which concludes at the end of this calendar year. So we're now doing our next plan for the next eight-year cycle, as once again, you know, all cities in California are doing. Um, and so what we're trying to balance is the huge increase in um, our uh, regional housing needs assessment allocation from the state. Uh, it, uh, if you follow housing at the state level, we will, uh, either in the newspaper or heard it on the news, you know, um, housing prices going through the roof, uh, housing supply uh, down, uh, therefore the state wanting to get real aggressive in terms of allowing for more housing to be produced throughout the state, specifically affordable housing. So that's laid out in your housing element update, which is that eight-year plan. Uh, the challenge is, is the state has mandated that we increase uh, our unit capacity uh, by a tremendous amount in the city of Downey. For instance, in our current eight-year cycle, um, our allocation is approximately fourteen hundred units. And uh, we didn't get close to, to uh, uh, building fourteen hundred units um, in our city. And then also, as you know, uh, governments don't build housing. We just zone and uh, allow for the opportunity for people to build housing in those zones. Well, the state uh, has mandated that we now um, zone for, instead of fourteen hundred units, sixty-five hundred units um, in, in that same city. Um, and, you know, as well as I do, our city hasn't grown in terms of square miles, in terms of being able to absorb all those additional units. Uh, cities have protested, cities have sued, uh, the state has says, too bad, you know, this is what you need to do. And so now we're trying to deal with the challenge of how we balance and lay out, uh, you know, those units and, and where they'll go. Uh, and so we're uh, probably about uh, halfway through that analysis. And uh, we've had two community meetings, both by Zoom, and both have been very, very well attended. Uh, the first meeting, we had close to forty participants. The second meeting with, which occurred last Monday of this week, we had over thirty participants. And um, uh, we're getting a lot of folks that are interested in uh, increasing the, the supply of affordable housing uh, in our community. Um, and so, uh, it'll be interesting to see how we start to collect uh, further community input on that. So we'll also be in front of the, the planning commission in the next uh, month or so. Uh, first with a study session, uh, so that we can provide that presentation to you and talk about, you know, what all those different things mean and the housing element, and, and then come back shortly thereafter uh, for your approval. Uh, we need to get something done uh, with the state, um, you know, by roughly October, uh, November of this calendar year. Uh, and we're on pace to do that. Uh, so th- those are all my, my updates for tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, and with that, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting, seven twenty-four. Hey, guys.
Good night.